First, we need to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moon by Chabillion, second by Sixberry. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one open forum. The guidelines for open forum are as follows. Speaker must state their name. Each speaker will be provided three minutes. No action can be taken unless the matter addressed is formally on the agenda. Speaker will not make negative comments regarding any employee of the district. The board chair can end the open forum at any time. Please note that data privacy laws do not allow for any matters concerning individual employees or students to be discussed. Kimberly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been teaching a long time and I've seen a lot of districts and I just want to say I've never seen a district like Big Lake. And so I thought, we just moved here, I've been the last year, and I thought, sometimes if you grew up in the community or have served for a long time, you forget what all you have in your district and your community. So I just wanted to bring a fresh set of eyes and a new perspective. So just want to share some things with you that I've noticed over time here. About a year ago, my family is very unfamiliar with Big Lake. And before we decided where to relocate, we actually toured seven different high schools and different school districts before we even decided where we were going to buy a house. And Big Lake was one of them. We were super impressed when we got here. And we were just impressed by so many things about your school district. Important things to teenagers, my son's a teenager. When we toured the high school, it was the online school system. The food choices in the cafeteria, which of course is important to a teenager, were great compared to his last school. We were impressed by the families such and things like, or the facilities, things like the pool. The new weight room. The fact that you have a community gym membership was great. The balanced budget, Doros's district, the friendliness of the staff and students. The robotics team, the engineering program, and it was cool learning about the sandbox opportunities. We heard on the tour that the school board was, this is just a quote from those students cracking down on dress code. I don't know if that's true or not, but I have to tell you as a parent, walking through the hallways of the high school and not seeing students wearing hats, hoodies, midriffs gave a very welcoming and academic atmosphere. That was very inviting to our family. We loved the friendliness and energy that came in the warm welcome by the counseling department at the high school. Before moving, my son played tennis against Big Lake, actually. And I have to tell you, this is where sports teams are important because I listened, I didn't know, I didn't make a choice yet where we're moving to. But I listened to those team members from Big Lake. I listened to their conversations. I listened. I watched how they treat each other. And we were just so impressed by their conversations and how they acted in their demeanor. And so it's just a good reminder that no matter where you are, if you're from Big Lake, you're representing that school district. And I think your students and your coaches represent you well, from what I've seen. The more I get to know how Big Lake, the more I get to know about Big Lake and the school district, the more impressed I am. After touring the high school, I got involved at Indy. I love the STEM focus there. The school follows some of the best practices in education. And it was refreshing to be a part of this great organization this year. Some of the best practices, like pumping GT students. I have my gifted and talented license and I was a gifted and talented coordinator. So it's nice to see just that GT, just how we're serving those students here. EL clusters, the great curriculum, CKLA is one of my favorites. So I just love seeing that here. Collecting instant and making instructional decisions in math. And the amazing STEM teachers. We have a great group of STEM teachers at Indy that do wonderful things. And just the rotation with robotics, on the launch program, engineering and art. The STEM activities and the lessons are top notch and you're engaging. I also worked for the science museum for a while in nonprofit education. And it's just so cool to see like, things like the golf, the golf stuff that they did. And some of the experiments that they do there. And it's just everything that I love about science and STEM. The PBIS system for the students and the staff are really impressive as well. It's fun to see like the 3D printing projects, the principal taxis. I can go on and on. One of my first impressions of Big Lake when I came here is it was nice to be a part of the PBIS as a teacher. And so I have to give John a credit, recognizing the staff and including them. It was great getting a front row parking spot, getting a caribou coffee delivered. I was like, wow, where did I just land? So that, just making that welcome to new people here. Also, I have to give a shout out to Scott Pierce. He went out the first snowfall and was clearing snow off of people's cars out in the parking lot. And that just really reflects the care that people have for each other here, as well as the culture and climate of the school system. The system and structures also are very refreshing at this school. They're very clear and outlined very well as a teacher to work under that. And the guidelines and communication really allows us teachers to just focus on teaching the kids and caring for the kids. And so it's nice to see under good leadership. The environment also. I love that newly remodeled libraries. I'm almost done. I don't know if I'm out under my three minutes. But the libraries at Indy and Liberty are bright, cheerful, and refreshing. And it makes students and staff want to be here. All the support staff are also wonderful. For instance, the custodians give out rewards for the cleanest classrooms every month. And share fun videos as they reward those to students. So it's just, it's just a nice overall atmosphere. Again, I can go on, but those are some of the highlights. And so I just want to encourage everybody in the school district that when things look bleak and dim, my hope is that parents, students, staff, and leadership and the community realize how blessed they are to be here in Big Lake. We wish, I wish we discovered this community earlier in life, but that's the... Sorry, I'm getting over cold. I am blessed by my, that my footprints, that you left footprints on my heart. And I hope that you are proud of your schools and accomplishments. I hope your families are aware how fortunate your students are to attend here. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for everyone in the district, the parents, everyone involved, bus drivers for their service to this community. And thank you again for your leadership and all that you do. And Big Lake will always have a special place in my heart. So, thank you.
Is there any other open forum? We'll move on. We have the consent agenda, the previous minutes from the April 23rd regular board meeting, the May 14th work session. Claims and accounts in the amount of, I think I lost my sticky for that. So, there it is. The credit card report, the personnel report, and the final reading of those policies listed. Moon by Brown. Second by Nelson. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto donations. I will make a motion to approve the donations. Second by Sixberry. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Activities update.
Yes, Madam Chair, as Mr. Queesley comes up, at the end of his presentation, I will be, we will be asking the board for approval because it does include some adjustment of some of the fees that he'll go through and kind of process through what it is. That is the action item that is being requested on the agenda this evening.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. Again, this is an update for you. Seems like just yesterday, I was standing in front of you guys for the first time. But I'm happy to say that when I was going to come back here, I was going to have better data than what I did the first time. And I hope that as we go through this process and you see the updates from the activities, you'll probably be able to picture what's going on within our department. So as you can see on our very first slide, we're very proud of our state champion this year for wrestling. He was ranked number one, Harrison Gellerman, all season long. And he came through and won a state championship for us at Big Lake this winter season. I may go to the next slide. Also, state entrance for us. We had boys cross country and the team and individual, girls diving, gymnastics, wrestling. We actually had a visual arts student who participated in the state visual arts festival, which was held at the Purport Center, which is an outstanding facility for our young students to be able to go visit, see, and actually take their artwork to that level of a competition. So very excited about that opportunity for our students. Also, for next fall, we had our conference meeting two weeks ago. And there was a discussion, of course, we're not in the Mississippi Eight for football. We're in district football. So the high school league scrambles everything, gives you 54, 58 schools, and you put a schedule together. And in talking with the member schools in the like-sized schools, many of them in the outer suburbs of the metro area are going to six o'clock starts for next fall. So rather than have seven o'clock games, six o'clock games, seven o'clock games, I think five out of our eight games will be at six o'clock PM. We already do one game at six o'clock, and that's our homecoming because we have the homecoming festivities of dance after that. So a little bit of a change coming into this fall as an administrative team. We talked about this, what would the impact be within our community? We thought, you know what, let's jump on and try it and see how it works for us in transitioning from the end of the school day to a Friday night football game. Homecoming week. Many people have been very patient with this. Like I said, we got the football schedule about two weeks ago. And the week of September 29th through October 4th is our homecoming week. October, October 3rd will actually be our Friday night football game with that. Middle school activities, we wanted to go through our activity fees and see how we compared. If you would like that data, I do have a spreadsheet from the Mississippi Eight schools to show what our high school fees are and what our middle school and our fine arts and activities fees are currently in our member schools. And we found that we were way behind, which is not a bad thing, but we also thought this is a good time for us to do some catch-up a little bit. So before you tonight, is a first of a two-year increment. We talked about moving from $99 to $125 this year, looking at what that impact will be. And then with this hope of next year going from 125 to 150. I just realized I got an extra zero in there. It's a typo. Sorry about that. Next item, ninth grade high school league, about a month ago approved those ninth grade changes that we talked about earlier this winter. I've already started having conversations with our coaches as to what that means. Now, nine through 12 students, we will track quarters, periods, halves, games. Game limitations for all those students who participate in ninth through 12. So as our eighth graders finish their school year here, they are now ninth graders. So they're going to be under a different umbrella coming into fall and out of the summer coaching waiver period. If seventh or eighth graders are moved up to a ninth grade team or JV, D, or varsity, they have to stay now. And systemically, that's going to be different for some of our coaches. They can't come up, play on a ninth grade team, go back down to that seventh or eighth grade middle school. We were doing a lot of floating in softball this spring between our seventh and eighth grades, girl softball team and our ninth grade. They won't be able to do that next year. They either got to stay on the ninth grade team or stay on the seventh and eighth grade team. So some good conversations about what that's going to look like. And then also, when they become a nine through 12, their non-school participation is done. They can go off and participate in weekend basketball tournaments, Sunday events, those types of things. So again, conversations with our parent, our community, our youth programs about that impact. But our coaches are well aware of our first step with that. Next up will be our participation numbers, gate receipts, and our unduplicated numbers. So first one is just participation numbers. We go to that next slide. There we go. Fall participation numbers, just kind of giving you a synopsis of where our fall participation numbers have been at. This is as far back as I could go with the current registration system that we have at Big Lake. And so you can see that our fall numbers are staying pretty steady with participation. And these are all students nine through 12 duplicated in every roster that we would have. So this last fall, we had 438 students involved in our programs, up just a little bit. But over the course of the last five years, about right where we have been coming out of COVID. Our winter, we see kind of those same numbers, still pretty close. When you look at our normal enrollment, the number of students hasn't gone up or down significantly, and I'll show you on another slide here. But for our numbers to stay pretty across the board the same is a good thing for our kids, that they are staying involved in our programs, they are participating in our activities. Next slide, please. The spring sports season. Spring sports, as you can see, we've been way up there. 450, and now we're back down to 439. I would say our numbers were down a little bit in softball. We stayed pretty steady in the track and field. Baseball was down a little bit. Golf, girls golf, we're really struggling there. We were trying to do some things differently in the recruiting of numbers and getting girls interested in our golf program. And that's one that we're really taking a close look at here for next year as to what can we do differently with that programming? So next, gate receipts. I kind of like to show you the revenue that's being brought in by our gate receipts. I wish this wasn't a roller coaster, but gate receipts are a roller coaster because it's weather and it's the quality of the team. If teams are doing really well, people follow quite a bit. And if they're not doing well, or being an average year, then our gate receipts will go down just a little bit. But we were at almost $33,000 in the boys' revenue. Highest was about $36,000 a couple of years ago. So not bad in the ballpark when we're looking at our ticket prices. And we've kept our ticket prices pretty consistent here for the last several years with those numbers. And then also, our girls' revenue is the next slide. Our girls was down. Our girls' revenue was down. A year ago, we had a really good dance invite in the winter season. This winter, even though it was on a non-school day, the participation at that invite was down significantly from the specter to peace. Our winter crowds were pretty average for girls this winter. And also in the fall, a little bit too for that. So again, a synopsis for you. I didn't compile the season tickets for students and/or for our adult season tickets. And that's another piece that I will give you in the future as a three, four, or five-year synopsis of what that looks like. Lastly, the numbers that I really hone in on at the end of the season because it has to do with our Title IX compliance. And you know, I'm a big Title IX compliant guy that wants to make sure our participation between boys and girls is as close as we can in the what, what are we offering and are we offering the right activities? And I'm proud to report to you that we have 54.89% of our boys participating in nine through 12. And 51.3 of our girls. For us to be within that three to four percent error is really good. There are some districts that that's in the 10%, 12% range. And right now, we're staying pretty healthy. And then the next slide kind of shows you the difference from 23 to 24. And in 23, we had a gap, a significant gap. Like I said, 11% almost there between boys and girls' participation. So I'm noticing our younger numbers are coming along. Our ninth and 10th grader numbers are staying healthy. Our seventh and eighth grade numbers, even though we can't use them in our Title IX compliance, it's nice for us to track so we can see in the future how many boys are coming into our program, how many girls we anticipate coming into our program as well. And then lastly, if you want a breakdown of the last seven years of our participation at the middle school level and at the high school level in each one of our activities on a yearly basis. I can shoot that to you in a Google file and you can take a look at that as well because I've got that now broken down into fall, winter, and spring. So that's my summary. Any questions?
I just want to clarify, so just the middle school activities are increasing at the high school?
Correct. Right now, great, great question. Right now, our high school fees are right in alignment with what our other Mississippi Eight schools are charging for those fees.
In line with the fee question, so at school board, we're really sure it was intentional of our students to start our school. And the reason why was to help with the role of the high school. And we did see a pattern of enrollment in the high and tenth grade, so I'd talk about the need for really helping. You know, when we reduced the fees, we were really tempted to get a role in the middle school, and then that was consistent up until ninth and 10th grade. And so with the fees increasing, I would be really interested in seeing if there's an impact in middle school enrollment. And then does that impact ninth and 10th grades? So I'll kind of keep an eye on that. Because we spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to get more kids involved with the middle school so that we could really promote both high school sports and enrollment in sports. And when you raise those fees and they're not getting a minimum of lower grades, that really challenged that high school level. So just, I mean, that was a really intentional thing done several years back, and I know it slowly cracked up. So I'd guess if we even go and make a huge donation to all of us with some of those fees, but I'd be, I'm a little bit worried about that impacting. And then also, I am interested in you to do that, the breakdown.
Sure.
That's good for us to track.
Yeah, great points as always. I too want to make sure that we're staying, we're eliminating as many barriers as we can for our students and/or their caregivers with them being involved. This is a safe, well, you just referred to, this is a safe, welcoming environment for our kids. There's no better place to be other than at home. And what we offer is pretty inclusive for this size of school. We should be proud of that. But I can't make those decisions without collecting the data. And that's what I didn't have coming into this. So if in a year we feel that we push the envelope, we'll need to have those conversations as to whether that fee should be increased the next step or not. So.
My only concern is like when you do that, and you do that incremental increase like that, it takes a few years to then readjust again. So that impact could, I mean, it's, it's taking two years, maybe four years to adjust, you know what I'm saying? So just food for thought, but because it was very intentional when we did make this.
Is there something in place if there's low-income families and their children want to participate in sports and activities?
Yeah, we have free and we have reduced currently. And our system that when they register online, we'll take that into consideration. So that Emily can send them an email back and they can get that reduced fee or no fee.
How is that communicated to families currently so they know in advance?
It's in our registration information. But again, what we really try to do is the grassroots piece and say to the coaches, hey, are there kids missing? Reach out to them, see why they're missing in our programs, and build those relationships so that we're not missing those students or having them fall through the cracks. Because I do believe that's a good way of looking at who was on our roster last year. Why are they not participating this year? And if we can do that financial piece, we do that.
With the increasing fees, the way we're looking, kind of going off what Amber was saying, is there a way we could explore doing something in terms of communication a little bit more than just the coaches reaching out to potential kids? Because there may be kids that haven't thought about activities or sports, or maybe they're new to the district and they're scared that they wouldn't be able to afford it, or they're embarrassed, and they don't know that there's those things in place.
I would say every district faces that same question of how you get to those students? What's the best way to try and reduce those barriers? And even in Rochester, I was working with that constantly. And then the difference in social economics between our three high schools. It's a fine line because sometimes parents will come to you for the help because they're comfortable in knowing that it's going to be private. And there are others that just won't make the phone call or break down that barrier to have the conversation as to how can my child participate?
Could it be added to like the registration page?
Certainly could add that information easily to that online page. And
First, are there seasonal work communications that go up of the district in this district? I don't know.
I think, I think too is that if this gets approved this evening, in communication, it's going to be, you know, just say, hey, remember, as you register, the increases they have increased. And if this is a struggle for you, these are our resources that we have. We could utilize that announcement of the increased fees as also a communication of if you need some additional support. We don't want that to be prohibitive of your participation. So I think, I think to kind of get in front of it, I hear what you're saying there, Derek, because I think that's a really good suggestion. And trying to get in front of it that way to make it part of the registration and the communication of the increased fees.
My thought is if, if we see, maybe with the increase in fees, we may not necessarily see a drop in numbers. But if we see an increase in utilization of discounted and waived fees, then we know that there's a concern that we need to address without hopefully seeing that negative impact of numbers. So. And that'd be a way for us to be able to gauge it with utilizing those processes and systems.
In future reports, I will put that as a note to show you hopefully historically. With our current database, I should be able to go back and do fall, winter, spring, free, reduced lunch count numbers of kids participating. And are we seeing that drastically increase? Are we seeing that decrease because they're not coming to our door and asking those questions? So great, great feedback. Yeah.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Can I have a quick one last question? Do you ever give surveys to the players based on their experience in this season?
Yeah, we do. I did it in the fall season just to kind of encapsulate for myself how things were going. And I got mixed reviews, so I ceased it because I want to reestablish my parameters and what the questions are that I'm asking. Because it's a survey that I brought from Rochester, and I just didn't feel that the information I was gathering was accurate about Big Lake kids. And so rather than continue on and have useless data. But yeah, there is a survey that I go and seek out from the kids that are on our current roster that just finished their participation. Usually it's the last week of the season so that I get them before they leave. And I'll have that reestablished for this upcoming year.
Do you do the survey with kids in co-op groups too, like hockey and lacrosse? Like just sort of?
In the past, yes. In the fall, we didn't, girls tennis, I guess, was the one that I just opened it up because I didn't look to see whether it was a spectrum student or a Big Lake student. So all of the students got that survey. Yeah. One of the things I will say about the co-ops is if we're not hosting the co-op, I'm finding that we can gather information and give feedback, but that's about as far as we can go because it's still the other district's responsibility for the full evaluation of that program and the evaluation of that coaching staff. But yeah, we do collect that feedback.
Just putting it out to the board members about approving just one year at a time. I mean, yeah, I mean, I guess I would, I would lean toward approving just this first year and reevaluating next year before we, I don't feel comfortable putting in a two-year fee increase without reassessing next year.
I would agree with you on that. So do you want to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the middle school fee, activity fee increase for the 25, 26 upcoming school year.
And then I'm assuming that you would want some data next spring before you make your next decision. Okay?
Okay, motion made by Chabillion, second by Nelson. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? All in favor? I oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
I will, Amber, get you the data on all of the activities and I'll make sure Kim. Yeah, I'll get it to Kim and I'll have her disseminate it that way, so.
Onto the financial report.
Good evening, school board members. enrollment as usual on the financial report. And you can go on to the next slide. So, more good news. We actually did have one, one ADM, or average daily membership increase from last month. And seeing growth, again, very common at this time of the year, seeing growth in the 612 Big Lake Online. You know, we lost students in some, in some buildings and grades, but then it was more than offset by the growth that we see in the Big Lake Online. So, bottom line is our average ADM is 3,134, which is seven over our second revised enrollment budget. I think it was last month or maybe the month before that I had brought that second revision forward. So we're in really good shape for the end of the year for enrollment. So that's good news. And then you can see that graphically here. That orange line is above that, the yellow line, which is our revised budget. So we can see that graphically that we're above our budget. So, again, good news. And then we do have a few budget revisions. So what is common at this time of the year is, is that we, I go through and I figure out, okay, what projects are we going to complete this year versus next year? Because we have June 30th year end, right in the middle of the summer. So, it just, so that was a lot of these revisions this month, was going through our capital and construction, LTFM projects. So, on revenue side, first of all, we did get a grant. So I just established a budget so they could do their ordering for that. That was a Central Minnesota Libraries Exchange grant. And then the other thing is, and working with TJ on that, the roofing, the hail claim project, we, the expenses are coming in a little bit higher than what we got in insurance proceeds. So we will be billing insurance, the underwriter knows that. So then I just adjusted the budget to reflect what our latest estimate is. That's at 458, 397. So total revenue increase in the general fund of 461, 397. And then if you go on to the next slide, on the expenditure side, again, establish a budget for that grant, the project cost for the hail claim. And then LTFM, had to increase it a little bit, again, working with TJ on that. And then on that last bullet point there, the decreased budgets for purchasing and project timelines. And then, so these dollar amounts are then, they're taken out of 24, 25, but then they're recommitted in 25, 26. As I'm establishing then the 25, 26 budget, those amounts go back in. So total expenditure decrease of 113, 873. And if you go on to the next slide, just want to let the board know, these revisions don't have any impact to that unassigned fund balance. That's the one we always look at. But it just affects these restricted and assigned fund balances. And again, like I said, most of those funds are recommitted then for next year. So again, it's common, common that I do that at this time of the year, it's usually in May. And this is our total budget, again, no change to the unassigned. And then, lastly, I was hoping we could talk about a deal, a bunch of deals. As you all know, they adjourn without a budget deal. And I put on their status a special session. I don't know that there's any updates, other than there's no deal. So, I just stuck because I did this PowerPoint last week and was hoping something would come through, but it has not. So I guess we stay tuned. I don't know what else to say. There really isn't anything to report, anything new, so.
They met one time and said nothing and dismissed and haven't, haven't, publicly.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I've not heard, I've not heard anything from my group, my MSBO group. I don't know, I don't think MSBA, I haven't seen anything there either, so. So hopefully maybe next month we can have an update on that. Hopefully they'll have something before June 30th, so. With that, that's all I have. So just need approval of the financial report and then the budget revisions that I just reviewed. Oh, sorry, any questions? I should say, any questions for me?
Any questions for Angie?
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report and budget revisions.
Motion made by Chabillion, second by Brown. Any other discussion? All in favor? I oppose, motion carries. Thank you. Onto approval of a transportation contract.
Yes, so Lynette, Ashley, and I negotiated a new transportation contract with, with Vision. And I, I had included this memo in the, in the school board packet, so I, I'm not going to reiterate the whole memo. But I just want to highlight that we did have to make a, an adjustment. I called a year-one market value adjustment because it was very clear that we were behind, we were very behind. And so we made that year-one, we agreed to that. And even with that adjustment, we actually are still behind our neighbors, but not significantly behind. And then, so after that year-one adjustment, so after that ongoing, the increases will be tied to CPI, actually the Transportation Consumer Price CPI as of January of the preceding year for the next year, next fiscal year. And, and, but we have a floor of 4%, so it guarantees they get at least 4%, but a ceiling of 8.5% because we felt we had to protect ourselves as well. And, yeah, because there was a few years, I know when we were looking at some historical data, you know, I mean, there was increases of double-digit increases in transportation, but we just felt we had to protect ourselves as well. Because unfortunately, we don't get double-digit increases from the state. So, let's see, I should add that, oh, this is actually a four-year contract and then, but with option to renew for another four years. And Ashley and Lynette, did you want to add anything? Did I forget anything?
It's just amazing how much this costs to do this. It's really eye-opening.
Oh, I'll agree with that. I, my board, I had to ask back times to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
The district I came from, we charge. So, and I share that. And it, you know, so I don't know, kind of like what our dad said and so forth. Sometimes you just don't know how lucky you are.
Yeah, yeah, and unfortunately, we can charge. I mean.
And we were lower than the other districts. And again, that's kind of lucky on our part, but, you know.
But, but we have a long, the other thing too, we have a longstanding relationship with Vision. And, and I do recommend approval of this contract. I know they've worked very hard. They themselves haven't, they've increased drivers' wages to, so they can recruit and retain. I think the biggest thing is retention. And, and things have gone pretty well this year, so. So I, I mean, unless there's any more questions for me or Ashley or Lynette, I do recommend approval of this contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract. I think you guys did a good job with this. I know we were really behind and the costs have gone up, not only just, I mean, you can see it just in the wages alone, but fuel and every, and all aspects. So, I think you guys did a great job.
Motion made by Sixberry, second by Hancock. Any other discussion? All in favor? I oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Angie. Onto curriculum presentations, or presentation.
First. Oh, guys, right now, we get. We have a lot, but that means we've been doing a lot of good work, so. All right, we are going to start with our ELA curriculum adoption. Sorry, it goes a little slow sometimes until they have a few tabs open. All right, so our ELA adoption, so as you know by statute, districts are local-controlled, so it is up to us to do a curriculum adoption. So, English Language Arts, Communication and Language that people use to, for all of what we do. And so this was our 68. We just did K5 previously, so a lot of you sat and watched us do that. So up now are 68. And remember, we had split those just because of the cost. And so we kind of did those. Next fall is the actual rollout of the English Language New Standards. And so we have to have everything ready by next fall. So we really, once again, rooted in Scarborough's rope, focusing on those higher-level knowledge, language comprehension, and as we walked through our process. So we did present these that you're going to see at the District Curriculum Advisory Committee, so we are going to go a little bit faster for you all tonight. So if you do have questions, please ask. Again, we, we started off our year with the Read Act Literacy Training. All of our middle school ELA teachers and special ed teachers went through the OLA training this year. And so we wanted them to get some foundation of that before we really dug into the curriculum. So we let them get into, I think about Module Eight, before we even really started our process. And then we started with our research and we reviewed the data. We identified some curriculums, we looked at our standards, we studied those standards, we investigated the entire body of research, which they were learning in the OLA curriculum. We did our initial vetting. Katie and Ryan dug in and found us some curriculums to look at. I listened at our networking sessions of what everyone was looking at. And then our ELA Curriculum Committee, which we have all the names on the last slide, really did a great job. Mr. Ernst set up a room for us and we had physical materials that we could look at. We had all the digital samples, which I had shared with our Curriculum Advisory Committee. And we came to these three, which then we set up in the room, and they really dug in. We had a rubric that we used based on the science of reading and the Minnesota ELA standards. And we just went through them all and filled out that rubric. And then we had the initial presentations in January, but if you remember, that PD day was a snow day. And so we did have them present to us virtually, which was better than nothing. And so we can, kind of continued to dig in. We did do a deep dive into all of the materials that we had on hand, as well as the, the digitals. We did pros and cons, we did parking lot questions, we asked questions to the vendors, had them reply to us. And, and this group really did a great job of really digging in from a teacher's lens. Ryan and Katie dug in through literacy leads and through our data leads, and we had technology digging in from technology. I was keeping that big picture, and so we really did a lot of work just to get it down to these two. And so we were down to Amplify ELA, which is the continuation from CKLA, it's the middle school version, and then Imagine Learning EL Education, which was the one that was approved for elementary. And so we did want to really give that one a good, a good look. We did have those two vendors come back and present to us in person. And we asked them to present to us within the parameters of what we have to teach in middle school. So we have 46 minutes, about 170 student days, because a lot of curriculums have all the bells and whistles in them. But how would it really look for our middle school students? And so that's what we asked them to do. And so then, after that, we discussed pros and cons. We let everybody on our curriculum really have voice to the decision, and we settled on Amplify ELA.
All right, so Amplify ELA is a really nice continuation of what we do in K5. And you can see on the slide, it's a high-quality curriculum. So anytime we're looking at curricular materials, we're looking at high-quality instructional materials. Doesn't matter what they are, that's the goal. Because we want high-quality instructional materials and evidence-based practices in our classrooms in every content area. So you can see it's content-specific cumulative, meaning that the kids are learning things that build upon each other from kindergarten all the way through eighth grade and then in the high school as well. And they're coherent. We looked really carefully at things that aligned to our district literacy initiative, so the four practices that we launched four years ago in all of our classrooms across the district. The Minnesota K-12 Academic Standards in ELA, which are new, they are going to be implemented this fall, even though we've been implementing them as, for the last year and a half since we've known about them. And then it aligns to our K5 CKLA curriculum.
As Mrs. Anderson mentioned, they are using CKLA currently at the elementary levels. Being in a district that has a primary and intermediate school, and then of course, our middle school here, it does make for a natural transition with this curriculum. Amplify at the CKLA level, K through two really focuses on knowledge and skills. Knowledge, the student knows what a theme is. Skill, they can identify the theme from the specific text. Transition to intermediate, three through five, the students are getting more of a blended model. The curriculum's starting to be guided through a collection of texts that progress with their skills. And it's starting to become embedded with the text by the time they arrive in our middle school. As sixth graders, they're familiar with the platform already, but now it's fully embedded in the text. So they have a natural progression of text. It wraps around a variety of interests. And now all those new Minnesota Academic Standards are innately embedded into those selected texts. So that was a big positive with that specific curriculum. Another thing I do want to, and we can actually go to the next slide. I didn't want to touch it, I didn't want to touch it. And so, one thing that I have heard amongst, you know, teachers that are friends of mine from other districts, and kind of what I'm gathering is Amplify is a popular program. And so, when I found out it was one of the three curriculums that we, as a Big Lake School District, were looking at, I kind of naturally had, in a way, a little bit of skepticism that I had to overcome with that. I kind of wanted to figure out, you know, why is this so popular? What is the one magic seed maybe that's in it? Is there not one? And kind of what I've overall noticed was there isn't necessarily one magic seed about it, it's the overall quality of the curriculum. Now, I think one thing I've heard a lot of about this curriculum is how well-designed the digital platform is. That was something that I was concerned about as a teacher. I'm a teacher who I truthfully believe that physically engaging with text is important. I'm a huge believer in muscle memory. I ask students repeatedly, write this down, write this down, write it multiple times down. Because if you are writing something down and you eventually write it wrong, that muscle memory is going to catch that. And so I'm a big believer in that. But despite that concern, I was reassured when Amplify, the vendor came in and they had told us everything that is available digitally is available in pencil and paper. I know we are, the district is purchasing all those materials for next year's rollout. And I do want to speak to especially sixth grade, because that's kind of my specialty. As a sixth grade teacher, I hear primarily, and I have students who have a variety of interests, like anybody, of course, but primarily students are interested in historical fiction and science fiction. On historical fiction, you can see that we have the Titanic collection there. Science fiction, a lot of those students are also interested in Greek mythology. And shout out to Greek mythology, we have a lot of root words there as well. Now, speaking to the digital piece about Amplify, although we can also have it completely pencil and paper, one thing that was really important, I connected with Ryan Purdy about this, is currently we use the FastBridge system, which has many pros to it, but some kind, sometimes accessing data for our trimester screeners or for progress monitoring from FastBridge can be quite cumbersome. One thing I'm very excited about with the Amplify curriculum is the ability to have consistency in assessments from classroom to classroom and then have a commonplace for teachers on the teacher dashboard to bring to PLC to compare and know that it's valid and consistent administration of that assessment.
That's you, sixth grade.
Yes, and so I do want to speak a little bit on this one. So this kind of breaks down into subunits a little bit. This is where we'd start to see, you know, when we go on to that Greek mythology unit, we have our subunits here that break down, break down the text further. And this is where also students would specifically engage with content-specific knowledge, content-specific skills. Other thing I like with this platform is amongst the three vendors that presented to our district, Amplify was the one that just simply fit the best with our scheduling. I don't think there's another way to get around that, it just simply fit the best. We looked at EL Education, we looked at Great Minds, and it would be a lot of slicing and dicing to get that to work. And I just don't feel, if those would have been the curriculums that we'd be recommending, that it would be delivered with fidelity.
I should introduce Ryan Herbald, he's one of our sixth grade ELA teachers. Katie Annison, who is our literacy lead at our district. So two people that were on our curriculum committee. And here's some seventh grade, and I'm stealing Katie's thunder because she would love to tell you all about these. Sorry. So if you want to learn more, I think we gave you passwords and the program guides are there. We also gave you linked onto here program guides for the K2 and 35 in case you wanted to go back and look at the CKLA. And I also put this little third edition thing, which.
And I also put this little third edition thing, which we're going to talk about in a little bit. Um, so here are the members of our middle school curriculum committee. And you can see we had our ELA teachers, we had our um, special ed teachers, we had technology, we had data, we had literacy, we had administration. We tried to get as many people that touched the middle school ELA curriculum um, in, involved in, in having a voice in adopting this. So with that, we would make a recommendation from the district curriculum advisory committee to the school board to consider adoption of Amplify ELA. And I am, um, I'm asking for a six-year adoption for this. Engagement is our specialty.
Mindy, looking at my notes, um, I'm sorry, I missed asking something in the curriculum advisory committee.
Yes.
Um, so just uh, the differentiation component. Um, is this middle school curriculum better set up to address skill deficiencies? I mean, are you able to pull out skill deficiencies better for this, to identify what the students are actually missing? Or is that still a interventionist?
Yes, and.
Yes, and. So the way that ELA is designed, um, if you use the print model, there are three different levels of differentiation in every lesson. If you use the digital, there are six. And it's really neat, um, I could talk about this for a long time, but like, for example, it'll give you a text, um, and like, it'll have the grade level text, but then they have the same text written um, in um, not as complex language, but the gist, the meaning is exactly the same. And it does that for every level. It's very, very cool. And so it allows kids who, to access the text that they wouldn't normally have access to. So it's very cool.
So they're still getting the, the high engaging content.
Yes, and the rigor is the same, it's just.
And the standard is the same.
Broken down to skill.
And Ashley, I'm so glad you asked this, because as I was sitting over there, I did get an email about something else that we've been looking at, and it's called Amplify Boost. And so most of our buildings have B-time. And so those, when you've heard me talk about MTSS, we have tier one, and that's for all students. And then we have tier two, kids that need a second helping or something else that we provide an additional, addition for. We've noticed in our tier one, as kids are going out to get their tier two, or even just those tier one or B-time, what do we do with these kids that's infidelity? That's aligned to our, so we've been looking at something called Boost, and it comes from Amplify. And they have a, um, K-five is Boost, Boost Close Reading is six-eight. So we're looking at that to complement this. It's new, hot off my email just now, but that is another way that we can differentiate for kids. And it's already built into our schedules. So we have that time, we have that pacing, we have it set aside. This would help us align what we're teaching, so that teachers have all of that material right there in front of them. So hot off the press, I'm not sure if we're going to get that yet, but something we're looking into. Any other questions?
I would make a motion to approve the six through eight, uh, ELA curriculum of Amplify ELA.
Okay, motion made by Shebillian, second by Nelson. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Alright, point of personal privilege, I really do have to thank that, that middle school ELA committee, just the hard work. They took it to heart when, when Mr. Ernst set up that room and we put out all the materials. They really did do their due diligence of rummaging through it and digging into it and digging into the platform. And so I, I really feel that this was a very well-made decision by them. So a fun thing happened, as I was calling Amplify to get quotes. Um, I call and I, you know, try and get that sweet spot, four years, five years, six years. What, what is the best pricing that we can get out of them? Um, and then being I'm old and old school, I always call back and say, and can we get free shipping? Because that used to be a thing, it's not a thing anymore. Um, and so they said, no, Mindy, you can't get free shipping. So I called back one more time, is there any, is there any other perk or thing you can give me free? Um, if I purchase this, come on now, we're K-eight, we've talked to other people about you. And she said, well, I'm going to tell you about a thing that we did with Bellplane. So we've worked, Katie and I have worked with Bellplane, aligning standards, doing a lot of the, the, the work with CKLA. And Bellplane, so CKLA came out with a third edition. And so what CKLA told us they would do for us is we had purchased a six-year edition of CKLA second edition. We purchased six years. So they said, what we'll do is we will buy back those four years, give you the third edition. And then if you add on two more to align with our six-eight purchase, we will give you all of that at a 10% discount. And so we were getting those four years of the upgrade at the price that we had paid for second edition, and then adding on the two years. And now that Angie knows how much my curriculum is, and I've got it all in a nice cycle, she can budget so that next time we're doing a K-eight adoption, rather than splitting it up. So we're going to just walk you very quickly through, what does a third edition look like? Um, so I'll let Katie take over.
Alright, so just like the second edition, CKLA three E is what we call it, um, it focuses on knowledge. So the, the purpose is to build kids' knowledge. There's two sides of Scarborough's rope, right? There's the, um, word recognition side and there's a language comprehension side. So both sides are recognized in CKLA. Um, so one thing that's really different about this particular edition is the pacing. Um, N-two E, one of the flaws of the program, it's very robust and it's really beautifully written, but there is too much instruction, there's too many days of instruction. And so after giving a lot of feedback to CKLA and them listening, because they're a really great company that way, they said, okay, we're going to make it better for you. So we, in K-one and two, there are ten units with sixteen lessons each. In three, four, and five, there are nine units with eighteen lessons each. That equals a hundred and sixty-five days of instruction. CKLA also has something called pausing point days that we do, we use them for remediation, we use them for extra things. Um, but those aren't included, but a hundred and sixty-five days of instruction, which is exactly the sweet spot where we want to be. Uh, this is a really very small slide, and there's a link at the end of this presentation that you're, um, more than welcome to go to look at. The topics, they align just like the previous ones, though. So like, they keep building on the topics. Ryan mentioned that in um, sixth grade, they do a Greek myths unit. We also do a Greek myths unit in second grade. So we see in Greek, uh, second, they do Greek, in third grade, they do Roman. So they build on top of each other as we go. Um, so this is, I'll just go through this really quick, because there's a lot of information here. But these are the units, and you can see the ones in red are the new ones and then, um, in the new edition. And then there's some that they've removed. And then they've also given us what's called choice units. And so a choice unit means that the district chooses between these two things. And then we adopt that for the whole district. And um, so our teachers have some voice and choice in what we are teaching, which is really cool. Um, first grade is, I mean, there's, you can see, so we went from eleven units to ten. And second grade, we went from twelve to ten. And third grade, we went from eleven to nine.
No, we got rid of the Vikings.
Not the, not the football team, but the actual Vikings. Um, so anyway, and then they added these really cool novel units. And so in um, fourth gr, or third grade, they get to choose between Charlotte's Web and Stella Diaz has something to say. In fourth grade, they get to choose between, from the mixed-up files of Mrs. Basely, Frank Wyler, which if you haven't read, it's really good. I highly recommend that one. Um, and the season of Six Malone. In fifth grade, they choose between the Phantom Tollbooth or the Science of Breakable Things. So just different things, um, that we've been asking for. So those choice units that I just mentioned, this is just another place that you can look at. I may put a link there that you can click on, so you can see this document. It's got more information than just these things. Um, and another thing that they added, oh, I forgot to mention this, they added a capstone unit. And um, K-one, two, it's just a research unit, but three, four, five, it's a capstone unit. And the capstone units align beautifully to our STEM practices and our STEM schools. So that's really fun for Indy as well. Um, writing is something that they really beefed up. We, we talk about the, um, the science of reading, right? So we have decoding, uh, or word recognition times language comprehension equals skilled reading. What they've uncovered over the past few years, well, fifty years, um, is that writing has something really similar. So there's transcription, transcription times composition, which equals skilled writing. So um, that's one of the things that they've really, they really hurt us when we said, we want more holistic writing, not just writing about what they're learning about, but then also like, the craft of writing. So that stuff is embedded in three E. So you can see that, um, the building blocks are there, sentence expansion, sentence combining. These are things that are really great activities for kids to do, because it teaches them not just how to be good writers, but in turn, because it processes how to be good readers. Um, and they're, they come from a resource called The Writing Revolution. If you've not seen that before, it's definitely worth looking into. Um, oh, I don't know what just happened. But it's by Judith Hackman and Natalie Wexler. Um, I'll keep telling you a little bit more, you don't need the slides, you can just listen for a second. Um, and one of the things that they added in third grade was, um, there was, they added a, some skills lessons. So teachers can either use them in their actual instruction, or they can use them as a pull-out, like, independent, um, small group stuff with their students as well. Um, and the, the systematic and explicit phonics instruction that really is part of the Read Act, um, that's what we're getting at there. We want our kids to know the code of language and how to break it. And so that, that systematic and explicit instruction is maintained in three E, because that's very strong in two E as well. Um, assessments are a little bit longer in the student workbooks. They're in a separate, um, in a separate resource that teachers can copy and hand out. Hey, thank you, magic. And let's see, I talked about that, we're going to skip. And another thing that really aligns beautifully to ELA is that there's a digital platform now that's teacher-facing. So students can actually do their assessments online. Oh, I forgot about this. Okay, I'll tell you about this first. So there's presentation screens, we have them in two E, but they're done in Google. This is its own platform, so teachers can go in and, um, look at the slides in advance. They can do a little bit of editing, but this makes it easier to hold fidelity to the curriculum the way that we want to. And then, um, with that platform, there's auto-scored assessments that students can do. And what's really neat about those, just like the ELA ones in six-eight, they give teachers reports. And you can see the reports here. So it shows like, here's how they did on this assessment, but the cooler thing is the one down below. Um, it'll actually break it apart by standards and say, this student did really great, I don't know, you guys. They did really great on this standard, or this is, this is a standard that you need to focus in more on. So that's really cool about that as well. Yes, absolutely. So that, and, and that gives us some data for our pausing point days as well. So those kinds of things all tie in together. It also helps us support our interventionists and that kind of thing as well. So it's kind of just a bigger ecosystem as far as what curriculum looks like. Um, also manuals are in full color, which doesn't seem like a big deal, but let me tell you, as a teacher for twenty-five years, color manuals are really big. So anyway, I, there is a link there that you can click on, you can type in the next chapter, that's the password. And you can literally see every single manual and all the bells and whistles that they're offering. So anyway, that's, um, CKLA three.
So I'm really not coming and asking you to approve curriculum like we normally do, because we've already approved this curriculum. What I'm asking for is your permission to do the buyback and take us into a six-year, instead of staying with the four-year and switching over to the three E. So there is a little upfront money, because we're going to buy new teacher materials, but they were only going to support two E for another four years anyways. And then we'd, we'd be doing this anyways, so we're getting that switch off of four years, plus then we're getting that 10% discount, and we're getting it off the two E price. And so this is a great opportunity for Big Lake to move ourselves into that third edition and get all the things that our teachers, um, have been asking for. Um, we did take this to the teachers, because we wanted their input. And of course, at first it was, what? We're going to do what? And then when we sat on it for a little bit and emotions, yep, then it was all good. Um, and then, so I said, well, email us back your feelings, your thoughts, your. Email me back was their choice units. So their, their teams got together and they, we want this, this, this. And we did want to have their voice in the choice units, because either choice is a good choice and either choice, because it covers the standards and aligns to all that scope and sequence. So we were really happy that our teachers had their voice included and, and that they did come to realize that this was a good opportunity for us.
I will second that. So motion made by Sixberry, second by Reasoner, any other discussion or questions?
Um, I just, I just wanted to say, um, so as a part of the curriculum advisory committee, um, I dug into all of these materials as best I could. Um, and also just getting updates throughout the process of implementation, um, both through my children that are in those grades, but also through Mindy. Um, and I just really want to give a super sincere thank you to all of the teachers that have undergone this implementation and the, you know, the research. And our Read Interventionists and our district administration, because giving CKLA the feedback of what our students in Big Lake need has given us an opportunity to not only save our taxpayers' money, but give our Big Lake students a more tailored and better educational opportunity. And I just think that speaks so much to the dedication of our staff, that they not just took in a new curriculum, okay, I'm going to do this, they took the new curriculum and they said, oh, but this would make it so much better. And then they acted on that. Um, and it's our, our community that's, um, going to take in the benefit of that. So I really have been impressed by the whole, the whole process. And um, I just wanted to make sure that was on record, that you guys are doing an excellent job.
Well, thank you, because you know, that whole MTSS, it's a heavy lift. And to do it well, it, it takes work, and it, and our teachers feel it. Um, but, but we are leaning in and we are doing a great job, and we're seeing it with our students, and we're seeing it with our results, and so we're excited. So we do have one more piece.
I think we have to vote yet.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Any other questions?
And then, I was waiting till you told us the second part of it before I asked.
Okay, which one do you want? Do you want the ELA or the?
She wants the whole.
Okay, so the ELA price is a little, because I'm only getting the right, the, um, student workbooks for one year. And so we'll have to go back out, which will be about another thirty thousand dollars a year to buy those. So for a six-year student, um, print, for the teacher's editions, and for the one year of writing, it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, oops, sorry, that's with Boost. Seaman is already writing notes on her paper, it's a hundred thousand dollars. Um, for six years, twenty thousand dollars is what my email just told me if we add Boost.
And that's six through eight?
That is six through eight. Amplify CKLA to do a six-year with student, and student workbooks for every year. So that's already included in this, um, is two hundred and five thousand. And that's for that additional two years, so it's a six-year quote.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Thank you.
Alright, yes, we have one more curriculum that we've been working on. And this one, uh, Mr. Bonnet's been leading up with a group of teachers who have been piloting, and one of our social workers who has been piloting the tier-two curriculum. And so we kind of went all in on this one, and um, I will let them.
Well, good evening. As you can see, I have a great team behind me, um, as we're looking at how we can best support our students uh, with building a, a more effective system, um, specifically with SCL. And so this slide is just from MDE, just to, so we all understand what SCL is. Um, those skills that they need for both school and in life. Um, and again, under, uh, from MDE, under Minnesota's ESAP plan, uh, they talk about, um, requiring schools to have, to develop a plan that promotes a well-rounded education. Part of that is explicitly teaching SCL skills, which, um, this program does that we're going to be talking about. As far as research goes, when we're talking about wanting to best help our, our students excel academically, research shows that schools that implement a, a evidence-based SCL program, like we're talking about tonight, does impact, positively impact their academics, so they go hand in hand. Um, this again is the, the curriculum research cycle, and you can see that, uh, we're looking at, um, our curriculum, uh, our SCL curriculum. So last year, uh, you approved, uh, Character Strong in the high school. And now, um, we're going through the process of implementing it or adopting it for K-eight. So all four buildings, uh, ideally would have the same SCL curriculum. So this is just the process that we went through, uh, showing at the top what's being currently used in the different schools. Um, and then looking at, uh, what, what is, what are other districts using? Uh, what does MDE's guidance on this, how does it compare to what we're currently using? And with that, uh, we created a Character Strong pilot team at the three schools to really dig into this tier-one curriculum, which would be in all classrooms, all students getting this material. I wanted to put, uh, a lot of documents, uh, up there, so you could see all, all the different pieces of the curriculum. Um, and some of them will be in these next slides. Uh, so just kind of big picture, K-five, um, the, the student outcomes that we have are well-being, engagement, and belonging. That's our goals for our students as they engage in these lessons. And you can see that they're grade and developmentally specific to students, uh, which is, again, it'll be K-12. Uh, each lesson is tailored to that specific grade. And this is more kind of in-depth of those specific skills that they'll be looking at. And this is more kind of in-depth of those specific skills that they'll be looking at in each of the different grades. Under social skills, executive functioning skills, motion regulation. So key areas that we can better equip our students with so they can be successful in life, but also successful in school. Uh, again, with the overview of six through 12, it's very similar. Um, so looking at these different skills that they're learning and going from knowing the skills to be able to, to be able to apply the skills with those three, uh, same three outcomes as K five. Again, a little bit more in-depth with the skills that our, our middle school and also our high schools are working on. So with our pilot teams, we, because we're piloting it in all three buildings, we assembled teams in all three buildings at, um, each grade level to have representatives. And our pilot teams grew as we started piloting it, uh, with teachers talking with each other about, this is what I'm doing. This is, I'm part of this pilot. This is what Character Strong is about. And so, um, in all the schools, those teams increased as more people wanted to be part of this, uh, pilot. Which just goes to show, um, with, with full plates, there are, our teachers are willing to do, uh, extra to help our students. And I feel like this is a really positive, uh, step forward as far as, uh, meeting our, our, the needs of our students holistically. So I asked a few of the piling teachers to come and share with you a little bit about their experience. Uh, so we'll start at Liberty with her.
Hi, I'm Courtney Goldseth. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Liberty. And I was really excited to start the Character Strong pilot and at the younger ages, it's called Purposeful People. Um, and as a kindergarten primary lens, I'm looking for engagement and keeping kindergartners engaged isn't always super easy unless you're really good at cartwheels across tables. If it's not full of color and catchy tunes, you're not gonna hold their attention for longer than a minute. So what I liked about Purposeful People that is that it had really catchy songs, um, with the video that went with it. The kids loved listening to them. And it was also teaching some of those key components of the curriculum. It also had videos that went along to teach a lesson. Um, it had moments where you would teach and then reflect and talk about what would you do in that situation? And it had a lot of games, um, in the connect component that really taught the nine character traits that we were aiming to teach. And there are some of the games that we've played before, but it taught it from a character trait perspective instead. Um, the unit or the year started off with a kindness kickoff that really focused on anti-bullying and taught kids what is bullying, what should I do if I see it happening, what is not bullying? So that we can equip kids with that language right from the get-go. Um, another part that I really liked what was that it had a really strong school connection, but also a home component. So that parents would know what we were teaching and would know how to engage in that conversation at home. And some things that they could do on the home front to, to show that they know what respect is, um, to know what those nine different character traits were. So overall, from primary, it was super engaging and, um, our pilot team grew significantly because we were really excited about it. I think in kindergarten, we started with two on the pilot and we ended with 10 of our 12 teachers. So we are really excited to hopefully go forward with it.
All right, and I'm Joey Houston from Independence. And here's kinda what we see when we look at the format. And what's really nice is this goes with our PBIS less like monthly theme with student of the month. And one thing that I really liked about it is if you look at the bottom with the start, the connect, the grow, the respond and the exit. It was really flexible for us teachers. So it's like the, the, the grow part's really your big lesson. That's about a half an hour, 20 minutes to a half an hour. That really anchors it in, but it, it's really a, uh, every week, there's four weeks each of the months. And what's nice is if you hit start, it can be five minutes. The connect, if you need a brain break during the day, it's a really quick four things. We don't have to really prep anything. It's there. They have these two characters that the fourth graders were like, oh, I don't know if I like it, but you know what? You play into it and they loved it. Um, and then there's a clo- that respond is kinda like rock, paper, scissors and like, that teaches a lesson. And then the exit is your closing circle. So it really works well for, we've been responsive classroom trained for a long time. And it really, really worked well with that. Um, one thing that I liked about our grade, our, our, our thing too, there's a tree. And it's kinda like the problem solving, like look at the roots, where did it stem from? Then you have your, your trunk. And then which way do you go with your branches? And it kinda gives the kids a, I can handle this problem. Is it big? Is it small? And then another thing they have is, um, we've, it kinda reminds you a lot of Inside Out if you've seen that movie, but it has, what is it, Janet's? Earth, wind. It's like four different character, uh, four different earthly things with the, the emotional building things. And then one thing that I really, really like being a little teacher in my heart is every single week has a different book that goes with it. And kindergarten through fifth grade, they're all different books. So they're really good books that have strong characters that teach the kids how to be better people. So we really hope we go forward with it because the kids liked it and we liked it. I took some pictures that I forgot to get on the site.
I'm April Bischoff, uh, eighth grade, actually. Uh, we, and Ann Segner, um, my co-partner here, uh, we teach sixth grade social studies. But eighth grade advisory this year, we get the privilege of having these kids six, seventh and eighth grade. So we kinda follow them. So it was really interesting to jump into Character Strong, having, uh, done a different, um, SCL curriculum before that. Um, our, our sixth graders, you know, they're always motivated. They come in, they wanna share things. Seventh grade, it kinda tapers off a little bit. And by the time they get to eighth grade, they're like, we're not talking out loud. We'll write whatever you want, but we're not gonna say anything out loud. So, um, with this curriculum, which we've only done for the last couple of months. Um, they, there was definitely a shift, um, from Lion's Quest to this, where they, they seemed to be much more engaged. And, um, there was a lot to this program that made it, uh, much more exciting for them and engaging.
So our advisory, our elementary will be doing this twice a week, which, um, fits in our schedule already. And going into middle school is a transition. We all know that. And one of the things that our students really like is empowering them with choice. And our layout is a little bit different. The connect, it'll have six to 10 different questions and you can ask them, um, would, give me a number. Well, just that they get excited about. So it flips it and it's an engaging question that we do that in a small group. Have their conversation, bring it up to the big group. And there's times you can talk about that one question for 10 minutes. So that's been really exciting with it. Our exit is a little bit different as well. It's called the dare. So the kids like that as far as like, okay, now that you learned this, you're, we're daring you to go out and make a connection with our school, with our community, even at home. And the next lesson then starts back with the dare. What did you do? What did you find out? And the kids were really engaged with that. So.
Very receptive. Yes, it was an excellent program.
So that's our tier one pilot. So again, lessons that all students will get. Um, before we move, shift onto the tier two, are there any tier one or questions about the presentation thus far? All right. So for tier two, it'd be those students who, uh, after getting these lessons, uh, through Character Strong's SCL lessons, if they're still struggling, then we're gonna help support them in different ways with this tier two, usually more kind of a small group, more targeted interventions. And so we went through a similar process, uh, piloting process. Um, so now we'll talk about that tier two piece. Again, in those same three buildings, Liberty, Independence and Middle School. So with interventions, you wanna make sure that you're always, you, you're understanding what is your students, the, the concern that you have for the student? And then matching the intervention to address that concern. And so Character Strong does a beautiful job. They have a, a five-step process to problem solve of what kind of, or how is the student struggling? And then what intervention do we have that can address that specifically? So there, there's two types. The one that's in gray on the left is, uh, with your, which is a skill building intervention where they'd be in small groups and learning these different, uh, pieces, um, because they don't have the skills yet to be successful in that, uh, situation. But then for students who do have, they do possess those skills, but they're not consistently applying them, then there's a, a different set of interventions that we're using with them that's in green. Um, to help, uh, kind of encourage, motivate and help them be more consistent in, um, uh, using those skills that they have. So, uh, Character Strong does a beautiful job, um, differentiating between the two. Um, again, just a lot of different, uh, documents so you could see what it looks like, uh, at the tier two level. Um, and I will, one thing I'll point out, as I think was, uh, mentioned before, is how it aligns really well with PBIS. Um, so one of the criteria we're looking at is with, how does it fit with our district? How does it fit with our school? And, uh, though it's flexible, it, it does align really well, uh, with what's already happening in our system. So with tier two, we had the same, uh, piloting teams, uh, with our, uh, s- uh, support staff, excuse me, our behavior staff. And so you can see their names up there. And one of those people, Christina, is gonna come and talk about kind of her experience with tier two at Indy.
Hi, my name's Christina Brown. I'm a social worker at Independence. Um, I presented earlier and said that I have a unique lens. Um, I moved here from Kansas and we used Character Strong for four years. Um, so I got to watch it play out in the elementary school and how easy it was for teachers, excuse me, um, and how much kids really did like it. Um, I heard them using the language in different classrooms and music and PE or FIAID here. Um, and in the hallways and the lunchroom. So that was really nice. We at Indy have been using, um, different curriculums for our, uh, tier two groups up until the spring. Our last round, we used Character Strong. Um, the students identified in our groups, we, um, they came out of the savers. Um, scales that teachers filled out and students filled out and students that were in high risk were the ones that we targeted to see what skills are they needing? And then we picked, put the groups together based on if they, it was internalizing, externalizing and those types of things. The tier two program has 10 sessions. Um, and they also have the connect component. Our, um, exit is mission. And so, you know, your mission to go out is X, Y, Z for this week. And then it also feeds back the next week. Okay, how did you do on your mission? What did you do? Those types of things. It does have opportunity to lend to, um, skill strategies. So that was really nice. Um, and kids really connected. And so as part of the, also the implementation part, um, we have implemented check-in, check-out with students who really needed that one-on-one connection with an adult in the building and more personalized, um, honing in on specific behaviors. So we did, um, the hornet way. So the five aspects of that, math, reading and specials. And so every morning I had a, had a couple of students where I would check in. Okay, the, today, what are we working on? Maybe something yesterday. So like one of my students today was, didn't wanna work in groups yesterday. So they didn't get points on that. Okay, so how can you work in groups today? How can you manage that and get more points today? Well, and she said, I'm not feeling very confident myself, Ms. Brown, today. I think you got it. You'll do great. Hundred percent. She wanted to, her goal was 80%. And so just seeing her beaming like, I did it, I did it, I did it. And I had another student, same thing, watching their confidence. So students who, in the classroom, teachers were having difficulties, having lots of conversations about behavior, different things they're doing, changing to where they were getting 90% on these charts. Um, and so they've been able to turn those around and take more responsibility for their own behavior and accountability for that. So it was really nice to see that aspect. So thank you.
So we're asking the board, uh, to, uh, honor our recommendation of adopting tier one and tier two Character Strong, um, for this next year. Um, so questions that you have about these programs?
So, um, I know we talked in the curriculum advisory committee as well, um, but I just was hoping that maybe you could just, um, touch base on the high school since we did implement this curriculum at the high school. Um, I've heard some not amazing feedback, um, pertaining specifically to the advisory period time, not necessarily to the Character Strong program, but to the advisory layout. Um, you told me earlier there was gonna be some changes to that. Would you mind explaining how you see this going better at the K through eight level? Um, and then getting better at the high school level because of potential changes to the advisory period?
Yeah, so we, we did learn a lot through, uh, implementing Character Strong at the high school this year. And some decisions that we made, um, we found that weren't as effective as, um, we now know. Um, one of those being, uh, kind of a main one would, would be, um, this year we had, when they had advisory at the high school, they had all four, students from all four grades in one advisory. Um, so they're mixed, thinking, uh, look, looking for ways to build community, having, uh, elders mentor the youngers, those types of things. Um, where we found that it was really difficult for students to feel comfortable, uh, participating in the lessons because they had different ages in that same, uh, group, that same class. So this next year, it will be just grade-specific, which is how Character Strong is designed to be. So ninth grade specific lessons for students that are just entering high school versus 12th graders who are ready to, uh, go to that next step. So that will be a big change that, um, I'm really hopeful, um, and confident that it will bring about a better result. Um, so then tailored to that, um, as we've been thinking about how to make sure that we're implementing, uh, in the schools next year with, uh, the three buildings, really going through this process of having the pilot team, um, thinking about, um, training for next year's, uh, teachers and making sure that we're doing it with fidelity. So it does have a better, uh, outcome than, than our first, uh, year at the high school.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Minda, you got my costs?
Well, I ran you a three-year cost, um, for tier one and, uh, for tier one K eight and for tier two, um, K 12. And then the other part of this is we do get some funding from the county that we will use for this. So we have some specific funding set aside for this. And so for that three-year quote, it would be about $46,000, $45,878.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I will make a motion to approve, uh, Character Strong, tier one and tier two. Second by Brown. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm not done yet.
You're on the QCOM, right? All right, I just, I do wanna give Ben a big shout out. Um, he has really led this piloting program. I'm not a big fan of piloting because sometimes if you pilot two different things, people, but he, um, he really felt strongly about it. And Character Strong allowed us to do this for no cost, which is the other thing. Usually pilots are expensive. So they were right alongside us. And once people started piloting, more and more teachers just wanted to jump on. And so that was a true testament to the program and to Ben's leadership. And so, um, I'm, I'm very thankful that, that he helped with this process. So thank you, Ben. All right, our last presentation for you all. And you know me, I can go as quick as you want me to. Um, so this is a statutory requirement for us to present to you for the QCOM program end of school year 2024, 2025. And with me, I'm going to call up our amazing peer coaches. We have a peer coach at every building. Um, and so they work, um, alongside implementing the QCOM program as well as being peer coaches, which are really instructional coaches in our buildings, which might I add is the highest level of evidence base that we can give our instructional growth for our teachers. And so these four people behind me wear a lot of hats, um, and are a main reason for a lot of what we do being so successful in our buildings. And I think every one of my principals would be sitting here doing this right now. Um, they are just an arm of our instruction that we just very much lean on. So history of QCOM, um, QCOM has been around since 2005. Big Lake adopted it in, um, 2011. I'm not sure if you've heard, but there is question if it will be around. Um, we have one more year funded through the legislation, but it was on the governor's list of budget cuts. Um, and so QCOM is, um, a funding source that helps us with teacher development and evaluation. Teacher development, development and evaluation is a statute that we have to do regardless if we get the funding from QCOM. And so QCOM is kinda that funding source that puts a couple more caveats on it. So this being one of them, um, we need to have, um, teacher leaders. And I don't know which. So the core component is, it's, it's helping develop those career ladders, those teacher leaders. And so that's part of what it wants. And so in our district, we have our oversight committee, which is a combination of teachers, BLEM leaders, our BLEM president and vice president, and then our administrators and myself. I'll sit on that and do the big oversight of the QCOM program. We have our PLC facilitators, which are teachers in every. We have our PLC facilitators, which are teachers in every grade level or department that sit in and are the leaders of those PLCs. And then we have our peer coaches who apply to be in that job. And then our principals and other teachers select them for that position. The other two components are the job-embedded professional development, which is our PLCs, our teacher observation and evaluation, which is that TD and E component that you have to have, but is embedded in this program. And then you also have to do some kind of a performance pay or an alternate schedule for your performance pay is embedded in this program. So our Q Comp plan. All right, so I already, it's usually in the notes and I can't see them down here. So our Q Comp plan, I already talked to you about how we've done those, those three. But what, what I really want you to hear tonight is the importance of our peer coaches. I do think this is one of the very solid reasons Big Lake is as successful as we've been, especially implementing all of the new things that have been thrown at everybody in the last three years. These, these are the people, and it just so happens that Q Comp helps us fund this right now. So, all right. So the, the peer coaches, are you going to do this to us?
So we do wear a lot of hats. One of the things that we try to stress with our teachers is we, we are teachers and we can be back in the classroom at any time. So we're really on that level playing field with them. But we can kind of be a go-between with administration and the teachers and kind of see things from both sides. I know that myself, I've learned a lot just in the position I've been in over the last few years, seeing things from, you know, different angles and things like that. So we offer a lot of different services for our teachers. We can certainly co-teach with them, co-plan. There's collaboration. At times we'll observe if, if somebody's struggling with something or there may be things, especially with like some of our newer teachers, classroom management can be a piece, where getting another set of eyes, it's not like we come in with all the answers, but we can sometimes make some suggestions or give them an opportunity to go view another teacher, which can be really, really beneficial. So we, we kind of wear those, those hats. We meet with our teachers at least four times. There's no cap on how much, if somebody wants to meet with us more or wants our support in any other way, but we do meet with some goal-setting with our PGP process. And then we meet roughly every trimester, kind of see how that progress is going throughout the year. So one of the biggest things that we've been doing over the last few years is we've done a lot coordinating with professional development. We've got a lot of PD days in there. And so whether we're facilitating some of those sessions or helping with some of that, that work on the backside leading into the preparation of that. So I guess basically our job throughout the year, we do a lot of the record-keeping that comes with Q Comp because with it being in the state statute, there are things that need to be turned into MDE. And so we do a lot of that with our teachers and our principals, trying to keep things lined up for them. And then along with the assistant superintendent, we gather data and try to see how we're progressing with those goals, whether that be our individual personal goals, but also the goals that come from our PLCs and that also come from our specific buildings. So we do do a lot with the, with the PLCs as well. We kind of, we kind of guide that and what those, those are going to look like. And then Ryan Purdy is another guy that helps us with a lot of the data digs. You've, you've heard him talk a little bit about Fastbridge and some of the things. And it's going to be really nice. I'm excited this next year with the ELA and having those similar assessments, that you're going to be able to bring those into those PLCs and really kind of look at how kids are doing with the exact same testing and things that have, have taken place. So those are a few things that we do during the year. I won't read everything to you, but we've been doing a lot of work here within the last month on, on new teacher prep and how we can work with those people and hopefully keep them, you know, in the job. It's, it's a tough field and, and seems to be, the numbers are dwindling of people going into the teaching profession. So if we can provide that support and give them a good start, hopefully that carries on throughout their career.
It even more, it just goes on and on and it just keeps going.
So you can kind of look through a lot of these. Like I said, I don't want to sit here and read, read everything to you. It's, it's interesting when somebody does ask you what you do. And you tell them you're an instructional coach, well, what does that mean? There's, there's a lot of different things that we, we, we fill roles in. You know, because even today, we're at the end of the year and here I am taking kids that, there was a portion of kids that were, were taking their English class and they were doing presentations. Well, these kids had the option of doing the presentation for their final or taking a, an essay exam. Well, I gave them the essay exam. So it, it really, we fill some roles in places that, that can plug some holes and really help meet our kids where they're at because not everybody's in the exact same place. And I'm not going to go into the cognitive coaching.
Before we jump into these roles, we are given the opportunity to take an eight-day training on cognitive coaching, and it's a fantastic training. I remember sitting in on the training and there were different parts that I was like, man, I wish that I had this as a teacher because the conversations that they teach you to have with the teachers trying to problem-solve and to not be the problem solver, but to, to get the teachers to really, you're really a mediator of their thinking. And so to be able to take that with, take that back and guide our conversations with the teachers, whether they're in our PGP meetings where the teachers are setting goals or teachers will come in if they're struggling with some students. You know, it's not, well, try this, try this. It's what's worked in the past or kind of asking those questions to guide their thinking so that they can be successful. It really aligns critical thinking closely to the act of teaching. So we use, using those tools and strategies, it just helps teachers recall their experiences, analyze their factors and generate different alternatives. That training has been fantastic for us.
And we're doing another instructional course, so we're not having coaching, but we're all going to do instructional coaching also to try and further our skills of that coaching process.
Good evening. I am Heidi Olson and I'm the peer coach at the high school. And this is my second year and it has been a wonderful opportunity to work with the teachers in a different, like they have said, we're side-by-side with them. We've been where they're at and we get to support them and help them and be there to, it's all research-based, helping them find information, sitting in their classrooms to give them a second set of eyes to say, so what about this? Or what do you think of this? So, and one of those components is the prioritized practices. Four times a year, at least, we meet with each one of the teachers and they each have their own professional growth plan that they get to select what they would like to focus on. And with this, this year at the high school, we had this special education team that focused, they had OLA. They did the literacy training and did a fabulous job with that. And then the other teachers, I sit down and I talk with them and we talk about their classroom, what they're working on, what they would like to focus on. And then we take a look at the prioritized practices, which we've worked on, developing resources for the teachers and to say, so how does this fit in here? And then that is what they focus on for their first cycle. And then at the end, they're gathering research. I can stop in their classrooms and get information for them. And they compile that and then they reflect on it. Then they, we meet again and then we start that process again, saying, do you want to continue with this? Would you like to develop this more? Or would you like, would your classroom, would your students be, would there be a better benefit in another area? So then that's what we work on. And so that is four meetings throughout the year. And it is the highlight for me that we've just finished up with is the final culminating meeting with them where they compile all of the information from the school year. And they're like, wow, we have accomplished a lot this year. They can see with the students, they can see the student work there. And then that goes in their final slide that they get to, it's like their best of. And that to me is one of the highlights to be able to see, for them to see all that they have accomplished that we're seeing. But sometimes when you're in the thick of it, you don't get an opportunity to see and notice. So I love that component about the prioritized practices, giving them choice, their working, and the success for them and for their students. So peer coach, a year in the life. When I came into this two years ago, it was what I had the opportunity also to do the cognitive coaching, which was fabulous. But you, you don't know how busy all that's involved in the day. So it's being in the classrooms, it's in the cafeteria, it's being visible with the students, talking with the students, it's checking in with teachers, how can I help you? What do you need today? We, as peer coaches, meet once a week and we collaborate and we talk together and we have resources that we can bring back to our teachers. We also facilitate the, every week we have professional learning communities that meet and we facilitate those. And we work with the mentors with that, the PLC facilitators with that. And we also then, along with that, we have the new teachers that we work with. And we have a new teacher PLC once a month that we collaborate with the new teachers, find out what their questions are and then meet together and then share. And then I can go into their classrooms, I can work with them on that to see, I can look up research. And then one thing that's not on here is that really was very successful at the high school is we started a weekly newsletter on Fridays called The Educator Hub. And it gave us an opportunity to say what's coming up next week and then put research in there for the teachers. Ryan Purdy had a literacy page in there, Joe Hartel had a technology page in there. And then we had a chance to highlight all of the teachers. And they got to see what the other teachers are doing in the high school. Because so often you're here and you don't get an opportunity to get outside of your classroom. And that was a highlight. So that, that took a lot of time, but then it got us into their classrooms again. And they got, they knew that we were seeing what they were doing and it opened up that conversation even more. So it is, to me, this is foundational in that we are there for the teachers, supporting them, helping them to be the best educators that they can for our wonderful Big Lake students.
So I can't even put value on, so another thing, just how awesome these people are. Resource Training and Solutions had, had been part of the new teacher, new teacher something with teacher mentorship. They were part of that grant and we just said, oh, we didn't have the capacity to do that. Well, then they came out this spring and said, well, if you want to be part of this smaller thing and help develop a better mentoring system in your school, you can come and join us for a day. And I said, hey, guys, you want to do this with me? And right away they said yes. And, and it was awesome. And so Ms. Deevil and the four peer coaches and myself went up. And in one day, we crafted a better mentor program. How do we keep and retain our teachers when we hire them so that they want to stay at Big Lake schools? And so with our administrative support and with our peer coaches, we are going to go into next year with an even better program. And so the value of our peer coaches is just something that we really can't replace. I mean, they are really the people to say, yes, they are the people that will dig in. They're, they do research-based. I mean, Patty will say that this is the best thing that we can do for our teachers is to give them somebody that's highly trained, highly qualified, has experience in the classroom, works well with their administrator and can really be that additional person to go in and help our teachers be the best that they can be, to help our students be the best that they can be. So I just, I really did want to focus on just the value of our peer coaches because everywhere that I go, any place, and people ask me, well, how many instructional coaches do you have? And I say, one for every building. They say, what? And I say, yes, that's how much we value them, one for every building. And I don't know how we would do it with less because they really do put everything they can into growing every aspect of our building. And everything is tying together in this MTSS system with what they're doing. And so I just, I'm hoping you understand the value.
Okay, I'm Sarah Edgar. I'm super proud to be the peer coach at Liberty. This is my fifth year, I'm finishing up my fifth year. Component two of the Q Comp plan is about PLCs, which we've mentioned a couple of times, but that's just our weekly meetings that teachers have with their teams, professional learning communities. And the peer coaches and I, we work really well together as far as we meet every Tuesday for our PLC. We have new teacher PLCs, we have data dig PLCs, we have PGP PLCs, where that one is where teachers can come together who have same professional growth plan topics and they can talk together. Like I like to pair a kindergarten, a first grade and a second grade teacher with a, with a special ed teacher. They can have wonderful conversations because like we said, sometimes we work in silos. And if we have that collaboration and we can talk together, sometimes you get like, oh, that's a great idea. I never thought of that before. So we really help develop those. We also get together, or we also plan within collaboration with our administrator what the PLCs are going to look like and make that plan for the year because we can see that long-term. A lot of times teachers are in that day-to-day and they kind of don't have that lens sometimes. And so we can help with that long-term goal of what we want to have, you know, what, what our goals are for the end of the year. So we help with PLCs as well.
All right, so teacher observation, this is something that by statute we have to do. Our, our peer coaches partner with our administrators. Our administrators are still in charge of doing the evaluation cycle. Our peer coaches are just the support, they're there to help. But our administration still is the one that does their summative evaluations. And then probationary teachers receive theirs three times per year. And then if you're non-probationary, it's every three years. Once you, every three years you get your, your circle. And so, yeah. So our last part is that performance pay. And so for this year, teachers who meet their PGP get one thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, ten dollars for meeting their building goal, ten dollars for meeting their PLC goal. Next year, that will be reduced to one thousand dollars. We also, I might have a slide in here, we also had to add in the cultural competency. We had last year kind of brought you a range of things. And so this doesn't have to be approved by the board, this is just information right now. So we did shore up being statutes of change. We did have to change it to a minimum of ninety days. Remember, it used to be a hundred and twenty. So that was one part that changed. And then we made some, some change, just kind of clarified that what, who can be involved in, in the Q Comp, being that we've had some statutory changes to the definition of teacher. The alternate salary is required by statute. And so this is how we make vertical movement, that's part of Q Comp. We have our goals, we're just getting done with our data. And so I didn't quite get this done, but you guys know. I just got it from them before I went on vacation. So, and here's what I want to say is sometimes we meet our goals, sometimes we don't. But the purpose is to set the goal and then the journey to get there. What did you learn in the journey to get there? And so people that set goals that are sometimes unattainable, what did you learn in getting there? I remember my first year of setting a, a Fastbridge goal. And once we talked to Fastbridge, they looked at me and they said, that's not even an attainable goal. And I went, huh, we learned something. So a, a goal to me isn't about making it or not making it. It's really about what we learned and how did we impact our students for the better. And so I'll bring these back to you in the fall. You always hear more data from me in the fall. So impact of our Q Comp program is just our, our system, that we're building the system. We're reviewing the data, we're doing the PLCs, we're doing the teacher evaluation that we are making sure that a hundred percent of our teachers are successful in their PGP goal. That's the one where when they meet with those teachers four times a year and they say, what do you want to accomplish? And how do I help you get there? And they really do help them get there. And so I think a hundred percent of our teachers did meet their PGP goal because that's kind of what we say, that we want to walk beside them to make sure that they meet that goal. So we're having them set some pretty rigorous goals, but then how do we get there? And we're changing those goals so it's more student-centered. So it's about changing the teacher, but it's about impacting students. And that's all we have. So thank you very much. That is all from us. Any questions from our peer coaches or from me about Q Comp?
I just have something to say. I just want to say that this is competitive. Not every district in the state has Q Comp. I know I've been in two districts that want to be part of Q Comp and they were not allowed because there's limited space. And due to the forward-thinking and the support and the teamwork and the success that they're seeing in two thousand and eleven and beyond, this has been part of Big Lake culture and who we are and a major part of. who we are, and a major part of teaching and learning and the important stuff that we do here. So, kudos and compliments to all those that have been involved throughout the time since two thousand and eleven. So, thank you for those.
I just wanted to say, I, I mean, and you probably heard this before, but I was part of the evaluation process when we started Q Comp and bringing it on. And I was nervous going into it, wasn't really sure, because there was a lot of talk around performance pay and retaining teachers. We were like, "Are we just making this about the money?" And then I got to go in and really see the PLCs and watch the collaboration and see how, you know, our longstanding teachers were bringing their experience to the new teachers, and how the new teachers were bringing fresh ideas and, and vice versa. And the conversation that was just going on in the room was amazing, the support they were getting from each other. But then you add in the peer, you know, the peer coach. And really, back then, the conversation was about retaining our teachers, like, how do we continue to support them and retain them? And that was really important. And now, like you, you've mentioned many times, the dynamic has changed, not to just retaining them, but recruiting them. And, and in recruitment, I think support is a huge thing, you know, to know that you can come in, you have this whole team behind you that's going to lift you up and carry you through. I mean, I know a lot of teachers in Big Lake have been around for, for a while now. And I can just say, like, the, the feedback that comes around about Q Comp and our, our peer coaches is huge. So I thank you for the time and efforts that you guys put in, and for the teachers, for the work that's done at the PLCs. And I really hope that, you know, more, moving forward, Q Comp will continue. Because, I, I mean, I-